Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I just wanna say happy birthday to Steph right off the bat. I think she turned twenty-nine today. So, happy twenty-ninth. Uh, I have an agenda in front of me. Uh, just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. E. Members of council, there are none from administration.
Alright, any from council? Okay, seeing none, I need adoption of the agenda. Thank you, Councilor Kravjak for making the motion to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. At this time, I'm looking for the adoption of the minutes regular meeting of council, August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four.
Yep, they look good to me.
Okay, thank you Deputy Crick for making the motion to approve these minutes. Any discussion? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Uh, we're gonna go on to six, six point one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't think your microphone's on.
So, this is development permit application.
I don't know if your mic turned on or not.
Oh.
Try it.
Good morning.
Mark and Jerry? Little closer.
The light isn't on. Um, on here, okay.
Good morning.
I guess these guys are hearing it, so we're good, thanks.
Good.
Yep, thank you.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash two-one-six. It was referred back to administration and we have some additional information. But, for review, uh, we will present the background report again. So, this development permit application is for a change of use from a bed and breakfast to an institutional use for a group home. The property is located northeast of the Range Road four-twenty and Highway fifty-five intersection, two-point-five miles west of the hamlet of Cherry Grove. Adjacent properties are residential parcels and quarter section remnants. The applicant would like to operate a group home for children aged zero to seventeen years old. Caregivers will work in shift providing coverage twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There is a requirement for one caregiver for every three children and there is accommodation for up to four children on the site. The caregivers prepare and pack meals for the children who attend local schools and participate in recreational activities. The organization is operating an approved home in the city of Cold Lake. If approved by the municipality, they will need approval from the fire and health authorities to enable an application to be made to the province. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on August second and we received a couple letters of concern. They inquired to learn more about the type of group home, children in the care, the qualifications of the, and the number of employees slash ratio of caretakers to children, and impacts on property values. It was disclosed that the home is for developmentally delayed and differently abled children, not children with addictions or legal issues. The director of care is a former nurse and the staff are experienced support workers with the required training for the caretakers' positions. The ratio is three children to one staff, which means there'd be four staff onsite twenty-four-seven if full occupancy is obtained. Assessment confirmed that proximity to a group home has no impacts on the property value. The additional letter that was received, they had concerns about destruction of their property and decreased property value and they state that it was confirmed by a realtor and lawyer. Um, the additional, or, our recommendation was to approve development application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash two-one-six for discretionary use, for an institutional use for a group home as per part six of the general regulations, part seven, section seventy-three point two of the land use by law with the following conditions. Shall be operated as per provincial approvals. Group homes is for minors aged zero to seventeen and maximum occupancy is ten minors. The additional information that came in states that, uh, the children will be, uh, going to school on a school bus if available, but they will be dropped off by staff if not. The level of care for the children ranges and they provide twenty-four-seven care for the children. Uh, additional services include transporting them to medical appointments and activities within the community. They range from fully able children to differently delayed children. They have been operating in Cold Lake, sent, they registered in two thousand and twenty and their first client was February twenty-twenty-three. Uh, they only operate and are licensed in Alberta and operate in Cold Lake. And the program that they are going to be applying under from the province does not include, and there is no intent to change, to include children or at least from juvenile detention or psychiatric hospitals. That is appendix E of the package. We do have the applicant here if you have additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional questions that you wanna, yes, go ahead, uh, Councilor Swiger, then Councilor Fadiev.
Yeah, it would be a question, I guess, for the, uh, the owner or the managers of the complex and this, you've made a note in here that says, uh, it's an approved, they have an approved home in Cold Lake. And so, I guess I, I question, what does approved mean? What is, what's an approved home?
They have approvals through the province to run the program in Cold Lake. They have a house in Cold Lake that accommodates these children.
So, they're actually, are they, are they, like, are they spreading out now and having, they want another home to do the same thing? With another ten kids or whatever, so?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, um, and I guess I would ask them how that's going right now in Cold Lake and, and then just, you know, 'cause I have, it's new to me, right? So, and I had questions about, um...
Well, we should actually make a motion and bring them up.
Well, okay, let's do that, 'cause you don't have the answers, do you?
I have a limited knowledge of their operations.
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask first.
You wanna make a motion?
And, well, sure, I'll make the motion to allow them to speak if we have those questions that we need answered, yeah.
Okay. Well, wait, I guess we don't have the big screens today, do we? Okay. I'll just wait till it comes up and then we'll read it out and then we'll...
Okay, thank you.
Go from there. Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Swiger for making this motion that council approves Baba Fiam, uh, Jai, and, sorry if I'm pronouncing your names wrong, Aluk, Aji, to address council in favor, opposition of agenda item six point one, development application number two-zero-two-four-D-two-one-six group home. Any discussion on this motion? And once again, I apologize if I said your names wrong, uh, okay? I'll call for the vote then. That's carried, thank you. Alright, Councilor Swiger?
Yeah, good morning, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, um, everybody, um, protocol observed. We are grateful for the opportunity to present our case and to tell you about the amazing things that Gosian is doing in Cold Lake, especially with the, uh, the children that we have in our care. Uh, my wife is here, Olunike, she's the visionary of the, um, the group home. Uh, she's a register and she'll speak more to the daily operations and we have our manager here as well, uh, Shalape Ordani. But, we wanna tell you, the, if you permit us, to just, uh, provide you from the genesis how this vision came into being and what we've been able to do so far in Cold Lake. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just like my husband has said, uh, this was my dream. It was something I became passionate about when I first got to North America. I, uh, just a correction, I am still a registered nurse. I still work as a nurse in the long-term care in Cold Lake. Actually, I have a shift tonight. Um, I left Nigeria in twenty thousand and two, yeah, two, two thousand and two, and I moved to Houston, Texas. My first job was to work as a frontline worker in a group home. This was where I first saw a group home and what it does. It was an amazing experience for me. I fell in love with all you could do to help a child that has challenges with the opportunities provided. Uh, when I moved to Canada in two thousand and seven, I lived in Calgary. I, I came from America as a licensed practical nurse, but in Canada, I decided to go get a degree. I went to the University of Ledbridge and did a program called the Bachelor of Science after degree, meaning with whatever you've had before and you want to go into nursing, this is a route for you. I did that, it was a two-year program. I finished, wrote my board, did well, and I have worked in different locations or different departments of nursing. I started in, um, acute care. From there, I went to orthopedics, from orthopedics, I did day surgery, I've done it all. When I came to Cold Lake, I didn't get an opportunity in acute care. I worked in the home care, which was how I got to meet different people in Cold Lake and that brought back my love for this, um, home care, um, the group home leaving for children. Of course, when there was nothing in Cold Lake, obviously, I had to keep working. So, I got a job in the long-term care and I've been there since, ever since, uh, two thousand and seventeen. Uh, in twenty-twenty, the, the, the love for group home was brought back to my, you know, forefront and I, myself and my husband, we talked about it. We did a lot of research, a lot of inquiries, a lot of questioning. There's none in this vicinity and, of course, I applied, you know, bring this, submit this, and I did everything, got insurance, got everything. Um, the Child and Family Service came out to my house several times for different approver, different things and, oops, sorry. And at the end of the day, I got my license in January of twenty-twenty-three. My first client came in February nine, but she came in at seventeen. Since I cannot take care of them once they turn eighteen, we were able to help her establish some kind of, uh, learning, like trade, what she wants to do, she wants to be a customer, uh, customer, you know, into air and everything. So, we set her up, helped her learn, and she's doing well in the community right now. I have had different other kids. Um, one of the kids I took care of was born with, um, cerebral palsy. She was non-verbal and non-mobile. She came to me March of twenty-twenty-three. On her first medical appointment, she was deemed to be double contracted, meaning, yes, cerebral palsy, she comes with contraction and everything. But because of neglect from family, she had lost even the little mobility that she could have. And on this particular appointment, we were shown the exercise she needs to do, all the things we can do for her. And we, uh, we did all of this daily. She had to do this exercise daily and everything. Not only that, she came to me at seventeen kilograms for a six-year-old. How was she discovered? Because she still had home care, visiting the house, they realized she had lost a lot of weight, no proper nutrition, and when she was taken to Stellary, they said she could not go back to that family, which was our grandma. The mother was no longer in the picture because she couldn't take care of her and grandma was also not doing all that was expected of her. So, when she was in the hospital for about five months, the DFNA, the, um, tribal chief east looked for a place and I was the closest to them and they asked if I could take care of her and I said, yes, I would love to take care of her. So, she came to us and we did all our exercise and everything. By the time we went back to the hospital this year, uh, June, when we went the first time, she was minus ninety degrees contraction, mobility and everything. By the time we went back, she was minus ten. Within a year, we were able to restore eighty percent of our mobility. Not only that, she now says hello, hi, bye. This was a girl that they said she could not talk. She wasn't eating anything by mouth, she was tube-fed. She's still tube-fed, but we're gradually introducing other foods. She would take pudding, apple sauce, and soups that has nothing in it because she, she's still having difficulty dealing with textures. Not only that, I've had another kid that, she, he hadn't gone to school for almost a year. They said he doesn't wanna go to school. But for me, when you come to me, under eighteen, you have to go to school. We can do other things, but your first priority assignment is school. So, we sent this boy to school. He could not go to a regular school because he admitted so much. So, he went to the outreach in Cold Lake. He took four courses and I will tell you, his mathematics, he finished with a seventy-four.
Okay, one sec.
Yeah.
You are very passionate. I'm just gonna cut you off for a second, I'm gonna get the counselor to ask you a question, so...
Please do, sorry.
So, that's okay, uh, you're very passionate and I love it. But, uh, we're gonna let the counselor ask you a question.
Go ahead.
Or any other counselors, so thank you.
Yeah, it was, uh, you know, I really appreciate what you're doing, what you, what you said, um, because this is all new to me. I, I had a question about, uh, the approved home, I didn't know what that meant. And now, is that approved by social services or child welfare or who approves a group home?
Child, family services.
Child, family services.
From the province of Alberta.
Okay, so the one that you have now in Cold Lake is, it's, uh, it's just in a residential district in Cold Lake somewhere? And you're not having any issues with that?
Nope, we need, we are in a five-bedroom house.
Okay.
In a regular neighborhood.
Okay, and then, uh, I, I kinda thought, I think you answered my questions with your, with your talk there, but, um... So, most of the kids, or the kids you're getting are, um, sort of from child social services or welfare or whatever system? I'm not sure what...
Oh, they always belong to a former, uh, system, meaning, uh, DFNA's. Right now, most of the ones I have are from, um, the DFNA's, which is the, or, I have from Onion Lake, I've had from tribal chief east, Frog Lake and all that. They try to stay within their community, otherwise they have to send them far and wide.
But how do they get into that system though? I'm not sure that, so they access you, but how do they get into that system?
Say that again, how do they get to me?
Yeah, is it through...
Because I am licensed under the government, so the government provide my names for the group home in their neighborhood.
And, and that was my question though, you said government, but with, sorry, I think you...
It's the Child and Family Services.
Child and Family Services, okay. I think you answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Yeah, Councilor Fadiev?
Excuse me, yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so, a couple of concerns that I, that I had last time in regards to, uh, you know, some, some sort of unforeseeable circumstances that might happen is it's a shared driveway. Uh, so, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the access from those driveways, from the highway to the home. Is there ten, maybe ten kids, is gonna be three to four people that are gonna be there? Is there any visitation with the kids and their families? And how often will that driveway, that shared driveway be used?
Um, presently, I would say...
I know, there's like three questions in one.
Okay, yeah, for, so when you say, uh, staff, for sure, we have, right now, we're on an eight-to-eight. So, staff will come in at eight, sure, that driveway will be used at then and, of course, when they leave at eight PM, when the other group comes in. Of course, they all come in a little bit before eight, they don't come in at eight. Quarter to seven-thirty, some of them are in the building. That's for sure when they will be used. When it comes to family, so far, most of the kids we get do not have family involved, which is why they come to us, because what they first do with all these kids is they try to do kinship and, you know, they go to aunties, uncles, or grandmas and after a while, they also get the burnout or not being interested or not doing the right thing.
So, uh, so in regards to the level of care needed for them, it sounds like it's, it's quite a big range.
A big range. Depends on what the government has for us.
Yeah, so, is there a specific range that you take or that you don't take?
So, um, the application, the ones we have just, we've applied for, we've applied, July? We submitted the application July and we're, we're waiting to hear back any time from now. So, they had theirs in two categories, zero to twelve and thirteen to seventeen. I chose zero to twelve because I have better understanding and, of course, if they end up giving me thirteen to seventeen, I will obviously do more learning, more research and get the right professionals to work with me, with them. And because this is a government-direct client, they will also work with us. They will send us all the right people to help establish the kids.
So, as of right now, do you see, sir, Reeve there, just, yeah, just kinda going, just, I'm, I'm okay with just asking more questions?
Yeah.
Okay, am I?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So, uh, so your support services for the clients that you have now, what kind of support services are you giving them outside of, uh, your home?
Outside of my home, they, we do activities. We go to energy center, we're registered, they all go, the big ones play basketball, the little ones play in the playpen, right? So, that's one of the things we do. We also help with, um, learning opportunities, like, we have a older kid that has challenges with school, the same one that did so well, but we have not left him to say, oh, you've done well and we just keep up with the studies and get help for him wherever he needs help. And every other thing, part of what we do is making sure their medical checks and dental eye, everything they get to because they're provided for, they just need help getting all this access.
Okay, um, so you're, so you have no intent of changing the, uh, the use of the place later on? It's now we're, we're, you know, there's some, uh, physical and cognitive issues that, that these people have with certain care, but we're just wondering, I'm wondering that, you know, once the, once the, once the permit is given, will that change at all?
No, not at all, it will not change. It is what I seek permit for and it is what I will use it for.
I'm okay for now.
One second, you guys have anything on this side? Yeah, Councilor Slipchik, then to Councilor Swiger.
So, you're, in your current facility, like you say, you've got neighbors beside you. Have you ever, in the time you've been running, received any complaints or concerns from neighbors?
No, not at present, um, because the kids are fully monitored. If they're going out, staff goes with them and all of that. We play in our backyard too, we have different toys, games and all of that. We do not. Uh, one time, the little girl, I guess, maybe she was crying too much during the exercise and I brought them in, come in, we're just doing our stretches and, of course, they understood what we were doing. That was it.
And there are questions, 'cause you're with the government, you must get regular inspection visits?
Oh, yes, we do.
And how often is that?
Every year. We get both fire, environmental, and, uh, food and safety, all of that, we get it every year because our license is also renewed every year.
And, uh, during your inspections, you've never had no issues, sir?
So far, none.
Okay, thank...
You're welcome.
And thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Swiger?
Yeah, I just want you to clarify, you said, uh, you, you had applied for zero to twelve?
Yes, because they had a category and I chose the one I want.
But you said you wanna apply, or, but you said this is for zero to seventeen?
Seventeen, because I'm under them and they would give me what is available. But, knowing this is my area of specialization, I would be more considered for that.
Okay, so it, it, it could be zero to seventeen though, right?
Yes, my license is zero to seventeen.
Thank you.
Councilor Fadiev?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, you guys are gonna be owning the home and you guys are the operators and the owners of the home as well, right? Okay. So, one of the concerns that I have is, uh, you know, the value of the property after, right? Is it, you know, I unfortunately had the, unfortunately had the, uh, the opportunity to buy a, an old group home and, uh, and it was, uh, in dire despair and so, you know, so the property values went down. But you said you're gonna be owning the place with considerable...
We literally own it, um, we own the one that we're using in Cold Lake too.
Thank you.
Councilor Slipchik?
Yeah, the one question I'm bringing up, who Councilor Fadiev mentioned about the shared driveway, but looking at the photo, isn't that on a road downstairs? Original driveway and then, and through their land or...
I'm just trying to look at it.
Uh, through the reef, Councilor Slipchik? That actually is a road allowance, so that is an MD road up to the houses, not a driveway. Okay?
Thanks for the clarification, yeah.
Yeah, so what you're meaning is everybody's coming up and down the same, the same, uh, MD? It's not a straight-through road, alright?
Like I say, one of my concerns was there's ten kids, you know, uh, you know, there's gonna be, you know...
Thank you, sir.
Uh, you know, visitors, all that stuff, since there is, there is none, I mean, it's just gonna be the, the group home. I, uh, I do understand, it's probably not much different than what the use is for now, so, thank you.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I, my, my picture of my screen is all blown up, I don't think that's where it's at, but it, it all, to me, in the picture, it looks like it's farmed, uh, I'm a farmer, so it looks like it's farmed all the way around your property. Is there any, like, what I can see so far, it doesn't look like a fence that, you know, is around your property. Is there gonna be a fence put up or...
There's, there's wire fence, like bar, uh, barbed wire.
Barbed wire fence, okay.
Yes, it does exist.
Just one second, sir, I'll, if, yeah.
You'll be able to answer more.
I think we probably need a motion for this gentleman to come up. Yeah, so just one second, we might be able to find where, what we're looking for. So, there's a barbed wire fence around the house, uh, is what I take it? And, uh, so what kind of house is this? Are the kids gonna be in buck beds in the room or...
No, they are gonna be in their own room, there, there's no shared room by any, uh...
So, this is a mansion of a house if there's up to, how many people are you gonna...
Ten, there're ten beds in there and that's all we will have in there.
Okay, so it's already rigged up with ten rooms in it?
Yes.
Okay.
Each room has its own bathroom.
Each, each room has its own bathroom as well? Okay. So, it's rigged up as what before?
Bed and breakfast before.
Bed and breakfast, okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, Reeve just told me I can ask a question, I just wondered if there's anyone else here that's wanting to speak for or against it and as a matter of procedural fairness here, like, we had one, one group get up and speak in favor, but I'm, I see a bunch of other people sitting out here tonight, today, so...
Yeah, we'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to let people speak, I guess, for or against it.
For Kristen Carter and Morgan Haas. They have a question.
Okay.
Is that good, the, well, Steph, is that alright the way that's written?
Uh, we can draft a motion to allow the, um, those two individuals to speak, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Councilor Crick, you're okay with making that motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick for making a motion that council approves Kristen Carter and Morgan...
Thank you, Counselor, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion that counsel approves Kristen Carter and Morgan Haas to address counsel in opposition of the agenda, item six point one, development, application number two zero two four D two one six, group home. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Welcome up.
Good morning again.
Morning.
Um, so my name's Kristen Carter. My father owns the property right next door. Um, first of all, we just want to be clear, we do not have a problem with differently disabled chil- children and the care and services that this organization is providing for them. We think that is an amazing thing that they can provide. Our issues and concern lies solely with the fact that this, well, as stated in their application, will be a government-funded facility and the negative impact that it will have on my family's livelihood due to a lowered property value. Um, although you guys have stated that you've compared property assessments, that will not properly show this impact. You need to look at recent sales. Cold Lake and Bonneville do not have the exact data to compare, but you can compare other cities. Properties next to government facilities sell at a much lower value than those a few blocks away. I understand this organization is currently operating in a residential area in Cold Lake, and there are no issues. Houses do sell in this area. But this situation is different, as it will now, they are now applying for government funding for this facility rather than the way they operate now. Our other concern is how will you, there's nothing, so right now, there's nothing saying that for a fact, if not all of these beds are filled by children of this criteria, the government cannot source out the remaining beds for different problems, such as troubled youth that have issues with the law or drugs, or even pose more of a concern for my family. I'm curious how you will regulate and enforce the fact that it will only be this criteria of children that stay at this home.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No? All right, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Kristi?
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Reeve, so, uh, the question that was asked about the criteria, i- is there, you know, do we, is there a mitigation that somebody takes or whatever? Like, they, you know, she maybe had a valid question but didn't get answered, so I'm not sure who answers that one, but, um...
So the application is for a scope of a group home for differently abled children. Uh, it does not include children that have legal issues or addiction issues. If they wanted to take on children like that, a change of use could be considered. But right now, that use is not covered under this application.
Okay, so to mitigate that risk, then we could just put that in, in our conditions? That if there's any change of use, it has, it would have to come back to, to counsel. I think that's fair. And I, and I get the question, because it is possible that the government says we have a bunch of youth that we don't know what to do with, and there's a home there that has five extra beds, maybe, you know, they can help out. But, uh, you know, we've had a good discussion. I, I love what they're doing. And so if we can put that as a, you know, in, in the, in the regulations for them.
So this permit is already for this type of use. That would be a different type of use. And also, it would require different types of caretakers than what is being provided for this use.
Okay, so you don't, you don't think we need to add any, any conditions at all then?
No.
Okay.
This application is for the scope of these types of children, not the other type of children. If they wanted to change it, it would be a change of use.
Okay.
So...
Counselor Slipchek?
So the way I understand, that they would definitely need to come forward and request a change in the application or the use of it to us before they could go forward, right?
Yes, if, if they wanted to take on those different types of children in need.
Yeah, Counsel, uh, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick?
Yeah, I guess I've heard that, uh, we've, there is no concerns really with Cold Lake. But, uh, without our administration, can they, can our administration confirm, I guess, that there's no concerns with the home that's already in Cold, currently in Cold Lake?
I had a look at the applicant's website and found the location of their home currently. It is in that new subdivision just off of Highway fifty-five before Cold Lake North. I believe it's called, um, English Bay Estates. It's a purely residential area. And, yeah. It, it has a lot more neighbors than this application does.
Yeah, I ju- I just wonder, like, and I'm not accusing anyone here of, of misleading anyone, just that anybody can come in here, stand at the microphone where you're standing, and say whatever they want. And if it's not, you know, fact-checked, I guess, then how do we know if it's, if it's accurate, right?
I have not reached out to the city of Cold Lake to see if there was anything.
We've reached out to the city of Cold Lake to find out if it's accurate. If, if there is no concerns, then I'm actually not seeing a problem with it myself. I think it's, they're doing a great work helping a lot of kids that, that need help, which is commendable. And I don't think it's, as long as there isn't, hasn't been concerned, actually has not, has not been any concerns at Cold Lake, then I think it's probably a, a good idea.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion this way or that? Counselor Slipchek?
I'll make a motion for option, uh, one that, um, they recommended, uh, action, that counsel approves development of this permit application.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Slipchek, for making a motion that counsel approves development permit application number two zero two four D two one six for change of use from bread and breakfast to, uh, institutional use for a group home on lot one, block one, plan zero six two two nine six three within southwest nineteen sixty-two one, west of the fourth meridian as discretionary use as per part six of the, sorry, of part six of the general regulation. Part seven, section seventy-three point two of the land use bylaw with the following conditions. One through three, and I'll read them off. One shall be operated as per provincial approvals. Two, group home is for minors ages zero to seventeen years old. And three, maximum occupancy is ten minors. Any discussion on this? Deputy Reeve Crick?
Yeah, I just want to, I guess, ask, put our CEO on the spot and ask his opinion here about, should we be checking with the city of Cold Lake first? Or what is your, kind of, you've had more experience in this, I guess, than I, than I have.
Through the Reeve, to, uh, counsel, to Deputy Reeve Crick and to the remainder of counsel. Uh, if counsel would certainly like with the direction from counsel, we certainly could reach out to the city of Cold Lake. I anticipate that the answer would probably be it's a, it's a non-issue. But we certainly could, if counsel wanted to do that, to, uh, um, uh, put a hold on this until the next council meeting and, and direct us to make that call and find out if there's any issues, we certainly can.
Mr. Reeve, if it's, if it's just a phone call, I, I'd suggest, can we just kind of expedite this by, you know, just bringing it back in, in, uh, twenty minutes or whatever? If you're willing to do that, if you can get through to someone?
Through the Reeve, uh, to Counselor Swiger, we certainly could. I, I just, I'm not, I make no guarantees that we'd be able to get into, hold of anybody. And by the time it works its way through the city Cold Lake system to talk to the appropriate people, and they would have to probably investigate the file and go back into the history, I would imagine it would be longer than twenty minutes. It, potentially, it could happen, uh, today. Uh, but I, I would make no guarantees that it could happen today.
I don't think someone's going to come and stand in front of the mic and say that they've had no, they've had issues. You know, if they had issues, they, if they came and stand before us, looked us in the eye and said they, they had, they didn't have no issues, and they did, I wouldn't want to be them. So, uh, I don't, uh, I don't think so. Uh, I'd have a hard time in standing in front of counsel and, and, uh, telling a lie like that, so. Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I haven't heard any, you know, I haven't even heard about the group home in, in Cold Lake, so I don't think there's any issues. I mean, I think if something like that was causing trouble, uh, we'd know about it, so. But I do understand that, uh, you know, I'd have concern too if I owned that property there. And I think, uh, we have, they have to regulate it, zeros, zero to seventeen, exactly what it says here, because I do agree if there's a, if it gets changed, then I can see a nightmare. But I'm pretty sure it was used, there's probably ten guys that are staying there in oil field that was, traffic was in and out of there continuously. It'd be a pretty busy place in the, in the boom of the oil field with, uh, ten places to bed and breakfast, so. Any other comments before, uh, or discussion? Okay, I'm going to call this to the vote. That's carried. Thank you. On to seven point one.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash two two nine. The applicant is Brian and Juliana Cook. The applicant is applying for a major home business use to operate a auto mechanic business. The property is located four miles north of Bonneville on Range Road four five five, point zero eight of a mile south of Towne Trip Road six two two. Adjacent properties are a residential, residential parcels and quarter section remnants. The applicant is applying to operate an auto mechanic business in an existing shop. Brian will be the only employee operating Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM on passenger vehicles. He's looking to work on four to five vehicles a day. Parking will be on site, and will only have one or two vehicles on site if waiting for parts. He will use a third-party safety disposal for the used oil and the antifreeze. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on August twenty-first, and we received no concerns. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash two two nine is approved the request for a major home business use to operate an auto mechanic business as a discretionary use as per part six, section forty-seven, part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw with the conditions listed.
Thank you. Someone like to make, yeah, Deputy Reeve?
I'll make a motion for option one to approve.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion that counsel approves development permit application number two zero two four D two two nine for a major home business for a auto mechanic business on plan one oh two six seven eight seven, block one, lot two, within southwest eight sixty-two five, west of the fourth M as discretionary use as per part six, section forty-seven, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw with the following conditions, one through two. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Go ahead, uh, Counselor Fadav.
Just before you go, uh, I was talking to, uh, the Morgans, and they're probably interested in doing an appeal. If this went ahead, you'll help or guide them through that process if needed?
Yes, I will direct them how to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great day. Okay, on to number eight, eight point one.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two zero two four dash S dash zero zero twelve, zero zero nine for counsel consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing a twelve-acre subdivision of southwest nineteen sixty-two six, west of the fourth meridian, as shown on the map attached in your package as appendix A. Notification of the proposed subdivision was submitted to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of August eighteenth to submit concerns to be considered at the September twelfth council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. The application proposes to subdivide a twelve-acre parcel from a previously subdivided agricultural quarter section. Subject site is located on Range Road four seventy, north of Forsyth Lake. Administrations recommend an action for subdivision application two zero two four dash S dash zero zero nine for a twelve-acre parcel from agricultural quarter section southwest nineteen sixty-two six, west of the fourth meridian, for Curtis Antonek with the following conditions. Number one, that the owner developer install internal roads approaches, including culverts, crossings, as per the satisfaction of the municipal district of Bonneville. The, um, number two is that the owner develop, owner or developer dedicate a seventeen-foot strip of land for road widening along the entire west frontage of the proposed parcel to be registered, excuse me, by separate road plan. Number three, that the owner developer pay the municipal cash-in lieu. Number four, that a real property report is submitted from an Alberta land surveyor. Number five, that the sewage disposal shall, excuse me, the sewage disposal shall comply to the Alberta Safety Codes Act and part two of the provincial, uh, the Province of Alberta Public Health Act. And that number six, that all municipal, uh, taxes be paid.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Swiger? Lisa, a question about, uh, it looks like a creek running through that twelve acres or whatever it is. Is there a creek splitting that? And the question would be, I guess, uh, you talked about internal roads and approaches, so, um, uh, would, are we going to give him allowance for two approaches, or does he need it? Or, I'm just not sure what the creek does to that parcel. Or is it even a creek?
Through the reef to council. There is the drainage ditch, or drainage, natural drainage that shows on the map that is attached in your package, shows where it goes through there. It does not do a fragmentation of any sort. So a second approach would not be, uh, necessary requirement for the subdivision of this parcel. Condition number one is on all applications, all subdivision applications, that the applicant must provide legal physical access to the parcel as well as to the remnant. So in this situation, as a standalone, um, they would have to create a separate approach into the quarter section as they cannot utilize, um, an industry road, which is there currently. So the applicant would have to provide their own access into the remainder of the quarter section.
So the, the, so the creek that's running through there is not a creek, it's, it's dry, is it, or is that what you're saying?
It is a natural drainage. So in the spring, that's the way the runoff goes. It's not an actual creek.
Uh, so, but that doesn't, that's not going to separate his, his land at all?
No, it doesn't. If, if that was removed, if you, if you had gone to the web map system, brought up the, um, parcel and removed that hydro imaging, it would show you how the layout of that land is. It doesn't show that there is any, um, ravine or anything like that in that area. And there is no standing water, as the water does flow directly through when, when it is runoff season.
Okay, thank you. Right, thank you. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, option one.
Thank you, Counselor Slipchek, for making this motion that counsel approves subdivision application number two zero two four S zero zero nine for a twelve-acre parcel from agricultural quarter section southwest nineteen sixty-two six, west of the fourth M for Curtis Antonek with the following conditions, one through six. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, on to eight point two.
I'm sorry, sir, was that passed? Motion carried?
Yes, sorry, carried. Sorry about that.
Good morning, Reeve and counsel.
Morning.
Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two thousand twenty-four S zero one zero for counsel consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing to create three lots with a total acre, area of twenty acres, leaving a hundred and thirty-nine acre remainder parcel from the existing quarter section located at southwest twenty-seven sixty-two to west of the fourth. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of August thirteenth to submit concerns to be considered at the September tenth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. Uh, for more detailed information on the subdivision requests, please see the attached appendix B. Um, this application was evaluated, evaluated against the Municipal Government Act Matters Related to Subdivision and Development, the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, and the City of Cold Lake Intermunicipal Development Plan. The six-hundred-dollar application fee was paid by the applicant. Notification of the decision will be provided to the applicant and applicable agencies. It is administrations recommended, recommended action that council approves subdivision application number two thousand twenty-four S zero-one-zero to create three lots with a total area of twenty acres from agricultural quarter section southwest twenty-seven sixty-two to west of the fourth for K Luger Developments Limited with the following conditions. One pursuant to section six fifty-five of the Municipal Government Act and section three point nine-three of the Municipal Development Plan that the owner developer install internal road approaches including culverts and crossings to the proposed parcels and to the remnant parcel to be provided at the owner's expense and to the specifications and satisfactions of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven. Two pursuant to section six sixty-one and six sixty-two of the Municipal Government Act and section three point nine of the Municipal Development Plan that the owner developer dedicate to the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven a five-point-one-eight-meter seventeen-feet-wide strip of land for road winding along the entire frontage of the south side of the proposed parcel and remnant parcels by registering a separate road plan and a five-point-one-eight-meter seventeen-foot wide strip of land for road widening along the entire frontage of the west side of the remnant parcel to be registered by caveat. Three pursuant to section six fifty-five of the Municipal Government Act and part one, section seven of the subdivision and development regulation, the owner developer for the sewage disposal shall install and comply to the Alberta Safety Codes Act and part two of the Province of Alberta Public Health Act. Pursuant to section six-six-six, six-six-seven, and six-six-nine of the Municipal Government Act that the owner developer pay to the Municipal District of Bonneville number seventy-eight-seven thirteen thousand four hundred and ninety-three per hectare cash-in lieu of municipal reserve owing for ten percent of the proposed parcels. A deferred reserve caveat shall be registered against the remnant parcel for the balance of the municipal reserve owing as a means of record, as a means of recording outstanding reserves. And five pursuant to section six fifty-four of the Municipal Government Act that all outstanding property taxes shall be paid.
Thank you, Counselor Fadav.
Good morning, yeah, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I would like to go for option number one, which is approval of subdivision, please.
Thank, sorry, excuse me. Thank you, Counselor Fadav, for making this motion that council approves subdivision application number two-zero-two-four S zero-one-zero to create three lots with a total acres of twenty acres from agricultural quarter section southwest twenty-seven sixty-two to west of the fourth M for K Luger Development Limited with the following conditions one through five. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor Slipcheck.
You know, I got a, I just got a question as I just noticed here, um, we're paying, Dick, he's gotta pay thirteen thousand four ninety-three per hectare?
That is correct.
And how does that number come to be? Cause like on the last one, I noticed was only like forty-one hundred. Could you just help me understand that better?
Yeah, uh, through the reef to council. Um, so the location basically dictates what the cost of that will be. This subdivision is very close to the city of Cold Lake, and as such, the market land rates are higher. So that's what we base these figures on. Um, so that's basically where we tied that number.
So those numbers are determined by your market value at that area?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, seeing no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Thank you.
I think we're gonna take five. Thank you, uh, I believe we're on to nine, nine point two point one.
While reviewing historic MD bylaws, administration discovered some active bylaws that should have been repealed. As such, administration has prepared a bylaw to repeal these historic bylaws that are no longer applicable and/or relevant. The bylaws that are proposed to be repealed through bylaw number eighteen seventy-three are bylaw number LU one-oh-one to adopt the Lakori area structure plan of nineteen eighty-eight is now governed under bylaw number seventeen eighty-two, the Lakori area, Lakori major area structure plan. Bylaw LU one-oh-two to adopt the Ardmore area structure plan of nineteen eighty-eight is now governed under bylaw number eighteen oh-four Ardmore area structure plan. And bylaw number LU one-oh-three to adopt the Fort Kent area structure plan of nineteen eighty-eight is now governed under bylaw number seventeen forty-nine Fort Kent area structure plan. Attached for the committee's review is appendix A and appendix B. Uh, this report is posted on the MD of Bonneville website under the council agenda for September tenth, two thousand twenty-four, and it is administrations recommended action that bylaw number eighteen seventy-three being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to repeal bylaws that are no longer applicable and/or relevant to municipal operations given first reading.
Thank you.
I'll move that we give it first reading.
Thank you Deputy Crick for making this motion that bylaw eighteen seventy-three being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to repeal bylaws that are no longer applicable and/or relevant to municipal operations to be given first reading. Any discussion?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
So I, I just have a question about, about bylaw eighteen seventy-three. So is that kind of an overarching bylaw that just says any other, any old, um, uh, bylaws that we wanna repeal? Uh, get repealed? Or do, do we have to bring it up every time there's a bylaw that should be?
Um, through the reef to council, this is specific to these three bylaws. Um, so bylaw number LU one-oh-one, LU one-oh-two, and LU one-oh-three.
Okay, so then my question is then, bylaw eighteen seventy-three isn't an overreaching bylaw on its own that would allow you to repeal every bylaw that you think we don't need? We'd still have to do, go through each one of them independently, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Thank you.
Nine point two point two.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
This is for a proclamation request. The Alberta Development Officers Association has submitted a proclamation request to the MD of Bonneville to acknowledge September twenty-first to the twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-four as Alberta Development Officers Week within the municipality. Alberta Development Officers Week helps to publicly recognize the work and commitment of our municipal colleagues in planning and development to appreciate the role development officers, development officers have in shaping our community, communities future through safe and responsible development practices. Administration's recommended action is that council approves a proclamation of September twenty-second to the twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-four as Alberta Development Officers Week in the Municipal District of Bonneville.
Thank you. Do we have a sheet that's all filled in or no? Just gonna read it off the screen here. Okay, I'm just gonna read this proclamation. Whereas the development officer is currently planning and development specialists with knowledge in current legislation, policy, and bylaw systems and technical requirements for physical development within communities in the province of Alberta. A development officer enforces and administers land use regulations and policies on behalf of the municipality and is designated in the position of development authority by the municipality and defined by the Municipal Government Act RSA two thousand, chapter M twenty-six. Whereas the Alberta Development Officer Association, representing professional development officers in Alberta, endorsed Alberta Development Off, Officer, Officers Week to recognize sound development and planning practices and, uh, contribution made by the development officers to the quality of development within our communities and environment. And whereas Alberta Development Officers Week helps us to publicly recognize the work of our municipal colleagues in planning and development for the improvement of the municipality. And whereas we recognize the development officers and their commitment to public service. And now therefore, I Barry Klansky do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-second to September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to be designated as Alberta Development Officers Week in the municipality. Proclaim this tenth day of September, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'm just, who made the motion? I missed that, my apologies.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you Deputy Creek, sorry Deputy Reeve Crick for making this motion that council approves a proclamation of September twenty-second to the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four as Alberta Development Officer Week in the Municipal District of Bonneville. Any discussion on this? Nope. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, that's always a tongue twister for me, these. On to nine point three point one. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council. This report has been prepared to amend the master rates bylaw and to up, update schedule A for council's approval. The following amendments have been made and are included in the attached bylaw eighteen seventy-eight draft in the areas of agriculture services, fire protection, transportation, and waste and resource recovery. You'll note the proposed changes appear in appendix B. Uh, it does align with council's strategic plan, goal number one, building a viable and diversified regional economy, and it is consistent with Municipal Government Act, section eight. There are no cost implications to this recommendation, and bylaw eighteen seventy-eight will be posted on the MD website. Uh, administration's recommended action is that bylaw number eighteen seventy-eight being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend the master rates bylaw be given first reading.
Thank you. Counselor Fadav.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks for highlighting it in green. It's, uh, it's great to see the changes and in red, uh, where it's, where you guys change it. So yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Uh, and, uh, based on that, I'd like to go for the first reading, please.
Okay, thank you Counselor Fadav for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen seventy-eight being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to amend the master rates bylaw to be given first reading. Any discussion? Yes, uh, Counselor Kreviak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. In the standby fee, it says five hundred dollars per unit per day plus manpower. So then why are the manpower time, uh, crossed out, manpower rates?
I'll, I'll refer to my colleague.
Matt, you're lucky you don't have one more laptop, it'd be pretty difficult to come up.
Um, through the reef and through, to Counselor Kreviak. So the change within the fire policy or the fire, uh, the rates schedule, um, we are amending them to, uh, to go with our fire loss policy that we have. The rate change from the man-hours is all incorporated within the seven hundred dollar, uh, per hour for the trucks, the apparatuses, and the manpower, so it's all included in one. Uh, this is the rates that are through Alberta transportation, and this is the fire authority also goes by the same, uh, rate schedule through Alberta transportation. This is provincial rates. It should have been caught previously on their, on our master rates bylaw, but it was, it was missed, so we just wanted to, uh, to bring it in line with our existing policy that we have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay. Great, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
On to nine point three point two.
Morning, Reeve and council.
Morning.
Um, this morning administration is proposing amendments to number C two-A dot zero twenty-eight Occupational Health and Safety Policy due to changes in the Occupational Health and Safety Act. The amended policy is attached and contains OHNS required revisions. There is no cost to this, and administration recommends that council adopt policy number C two-A dot zero twenty-eight Occupational Health and Safety Policy as presented.
Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand, like, it, there's a two-page document there that we're looking at. I don't quite see what changes were made or what it's actually doing. It's some definitions in a policy, but it's pretty, I don't know, it just seems like there's, is there something missing from that policy? Or why is it being changed? I, it's like a two-pager. Can you talk about it or? Am I missing something?
Uh, through the, through the reef, um, sorry, my understanding was that the changes were attached, but there is just three words that we're adding which include social and psychosocial and well-being, I think. And we needed to add that into because occupational health and safety requests that we have that in our policy.
Well, no, those changes are there, but to me, it just, I didn't quite know the, it's such a kind of small policy, it's not saying a lot, but so you added, yeah, it says addressing physical, psychological, and social well-being. And then it says including the MD's occupational health and safety management system, so that was the only changes to that policy. If, if you're good with it, I guess I am, it just doesn't seem to say much, but I guess it meets the, it meets whatever you have to do, right? For guidelines or something?
Yes, through the, through the reef, it's to meet Occupational Health and Safety Act.
All right, thank you. Someone like to make, yeah, go ahead.
So what would happen if we didn't approve this then? Just curious.
Um, yeah, I can explain that. Through the reef, actually during our audit, we, we lose marks on that policy cause we don't have that exact wording from legislation.
And, and what is, what, like, what the, what is physical, psychological, and social well-being?
I'm sorry.
What is physical, uh, it says addressing physical, psychological, and social well-being? I don't even fully comprehend what that is.
Uh, through the reef, um, originally, health and safety was basically, we're looking after the safety of individuals, and with the recent changes to the Occupational Health and Safety Act, they really want us to incorporate the social and the well-being, so, um, you know, the mental health side of it. So that terminology according to occupational health and safety legislation incorporates that we're looking after the whole person and not just the physical side of safety.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making this motion. The council adopts amending policy number C two-A zero-two-eight Occupational Health and Safety Policy as presented. Any discussion on this motion? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried and well done, a lot of questions drilled your way. Carried, thank you.
Yeah, just a comment on that.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, it'd be great to ask the province why they changed their act, so, you know, it's, uh, something you probably it's, uh, something you probably put on, on the list, yeah, for sure, right? They were just kind of following what they want.
Yeah.
And Mr. Reeve, if I may, if I may add, the psychological, social well-being, uh, we go into great detail in terms of our own policies, in terms of workplace harassment and bullying, which, uh, which would fall under the mental health, uh, parts of the occupational health and safety. Workplace violence, uh, and, uh, harassment and bullying are a big part of occupational health and safety these days, which also encapsulates the social well-being, uh, to make sure that when people come to work, they not only feel safe, that they won't be physically harmed, but they also won't be mentally or psychologically abused while they're in the workplace as well. And that's, those three words encapsulate all of those ideas.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's even more vitally important right now since we, uh, seen the, uh, the passing of, uh, of a worker in, uh, like Rocky, Rocky View, when they got shot there a couple, you know, months ago.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, yeah, I mean, it makes everybody a little bit on edge when, you know, you've always hear about stuff happening, but when it actually happens, it's, uh, yeah, it really brings it home, right? So, for sure, so just kind of condolences to those guys.
Yeah, there's a lot of ladies and gentlemen throughout our province and throughout the country that do the same kind of jobs, so makes everybody sit back and take a look at that, for sure. Thank you for noting that. All right, let's continue on to nine point four point one.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
I have, uh, an RFD for policy number four A point zero zero three, road protection and maintenance agreement and authorization policy amendment. At the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four committee, the whole meeting, administration presented policy four A point zero zero three, road protection, maintenance, and authorization policy with amendments. The committee made a motion, uh, that the committee recommends to council adopting policy number C dash four A point zero zero three, road protection and maintenance agreement and authorization policy as presented. Attached is, uh, as Appendix A is policy four A point zero zero three, road protection, maintenance, and authorization policy as presented to the committee of the whole. Uh, the communication on this is going to be, uh, via the policies and council minutes posted on the MD website and it's administration's recommendation that council adopts policy number C dash four A point zero zero three, road protection, maintenance, and authorization policy as recommended by the committee of the whole.
Thank you. Somebody like to make a motion? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, it says here the purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines. So when are you establishing guidelines or what? Or this, these are the guidelines, right?
Uh, through the Reeve to Counselor Krevjak, the guidelines are within the, uh, road protection, uh, agreement, like, so our, our road use agreements.
Okay.
Uh, that's where the conditions are. This is just a policy outlining that we're going to have the conditions somewhere, that's where it is, it's in the, it's in the road use agreements that we sign.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make the motion since we, uh, since this came across the committee of the whole and we're all here, we all had some input, so I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you Counselor Fadev for making this motion that council adopts amending policy number C four A zero zero three, road protection, maintenance, and authorization policy as recommended by the committee of the whole. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto nine point four point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, uh, members of council, I have, uh, policy number four A point zero one two, summer road maintenance policy amendment. At the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four committee, the whole meeting, administration presented the committee with the amended policy four A point zero one two, summer road maintenance policy. The committee passed a motion to recommend to council to adopt policy C dash four A point zero one two, summer road maintenance policy as presented. Attached as Appendix A is policy C dash four A point zero one two as presented to the committee of the whole. Communication of this policy will be via the policies and council minutes posted on the MD website and it's administration's recommendation that council adopts amending policy number C dash four A point zero one two, summer road maintenance policy as recommended by the committee of the whole.
Thank you. That's pretty loud. Would anyone like to make a motion or we're still reading through it again?
Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to adopt.
Thank you Counselor Swagert for making this motion that council adopts amending policy number C four A zero one two, summer road maintenance policy as recommended by the committee of the whole. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just have a quick, just a, just a comment on this, uh, on the summer road maintenance plan, and thank you for getting us, uh, crack ceiling and line painting on schedule and on time, uh, greatly appreciated. I had a few comments already on that, so, thanks.
Through the Reeve to Counselor Fadev, thank you for that. Uh, the team worked really hard making sure that the contractors were, uh, were in place and on time and, uh, so yeah, the, the team did a good job on it, thank you for that.
All right, thank you, that motion was carried, thank you. Onto nine point four point three.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, uh, we have the Infrastructure Services twenty twenty-four second quarterly report. Uh, Infrastructure Services is presenting the quarter two report for council information and Transportation Manager, uh, Monte D'Enco will present the fleet facilities and utilities and the transportation reports.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and councillors.
Morning.
So I'll be presenting both the, uh, infrastructure and the transportation. Start with Appendix A, can you hear me every?
Yeah.
Okay. The design build of the Cherry Grove Fire Hall and Greater Shop. The brushing for the proposed site was completed in-house, the contract was awarded April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and construction began in early August. Uh, the project is ongoing. Expect to see, uh, the erection of the building here by Christmas. The shop with the yard was purchased in Aurora Borealis subdivision, the ag and waste departments are currently moving their, ag is in there and waste will be there shortly, so we did some work in the yard and it's all ready to go. And that was about it for Q two for the infrastructure, are there any questions on that?
Yes, uh, Counselor Slipchak then Counselor Fadev.
I noticed you got ag and waste department, uh, we're, we're also including the airport maintenance equipment in there, we're going to be putting in and what?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Slipchak, that is correct, we're going to utilize, uh, one or a little maybe one and a half bays during the wintertime for our equipment, so it's, uh, easily accessible and a lot closer to the airport. That, that, that size may change here and there, but yes.
Thank you.
Our, excuse me.
Yeah.
Our airport ma, equipment is going to be the priority for this building, correct, or maintenance equipment?
Through the Reeve, yes, it will be in there all winter.
Thank you, Counselor Fadev.
Yeah, good morning, uh, so regards to the Cherry Grove Hall, uh, I keep getting questions regards to, uh, when could they possibly see something happening besides the brushing? Uh, when, when, you know, when are we anticipating some sort of walls coming up and all, all that wonderful?
So my understanding is the site creating is complete, um, they're prepping for the grade beams, the foundation design is complete, uh, piling subcontractor will be the next person on site, so shortly would be the answer, and yeah, by, by late, uh, Q four, there, there will be visible construction there.
Sounds good, yeah, because there's, uh, I just went to a little bit of a rodeo over there and I got, almost got tied and ripped and all that stuff, asking me questions, but I didn't know, just kidding. But no, thank you for that and, uh, everybody's looking at, uh, really anticipating that build, so appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Hogan.
Uh, thank you, Mr., uh, Mr. Reeve, and to Counselor Fadev's question, uh, the building is a modular building, um, so when it shows up on site, uh, on, on however, however it's going to be prepackaged, it will go from, uh, being on site to being standing literally in several weeks. It's a, uh, it's basically a, a large Lego set, uh, um, and once it starts being built, it will, it will happen very quickly and then of course the interior work, but we anticipate very quickly that, that, um, that's, that piece of the equipment in the modular building will actually show up, uh, pilings are going in in the next couple of weeks to prepare for that.
Thank you. I think having something like that at the rodeo, roping a councillor for a fundraiser would be a good idea there, Mr. Fadev, so. All right, uh, we probably looking for, uh, a motion on this, or not yet, you, you have another, yeah, one more, sorry, apologize.
So we'll carry on to the transportation.
Right on.
For Q two. Roadside brushing and ditch improvements, uh, we self-performed one project on Range Road four forty-two between six fourteen and six fifteen A. Uh, we tendered out the brushing program in Q one and is expected, says here expected to begin in late August, we're in communication with the contractor and they will be starting here, they assure us within the next two or three weeks. Uh, we have, they either have to do it early spring or after August fifteenth for the bird nesting requirements. Rip and relay program, so this year in preparation for our rip and relay program, several project locations were drilled for geotechnical investigation, see what's underneath there, why the roads are, are failing or if they're failing or if it's just a surface repair. The results were then used in project planning and timeline forecasting. Such an update, we start, we did start in July, we're about two-thirds of the way through the material that we have for this year. The gravelling program, as of Q two, we had hauled twenty-five thousand tons of gravel during the, uh, spring season. And it is nearly complete, the gravelling program, there's only one more greater beat to, to be done. Shoulder pull program, Q two saw two separate shoulder pull projects and there was a few more done in Q three, the remaining projects will be completed throughout the, the rest of the summer and fall here as the weather permits. The dust control program, contract involving approximately sixty-five kilometers of gravel road over three years was awarded on April eighteenth, the applications of dust suppressant for this season's program started in July and we are complete with the exception of one cold mix, uh, cold mix dust control that is scheduled to be done here within the next ten days. Pit reclamation, we continue to pick away these metal-y pits, topsoil has been added and large rocks removed, uh, monitoring them on the site ongoing, and the access road will be reclaimed at a later date. Next slide is a list of the concerns we received, so we received one hundred and eighty-one concerns in Q two and just kind of breaks down what they were pertaining to. Any questions on that one?
Yes, Counselor Slipchak.
Your roadside brushing and ditch improvements, how do you guys determine where to do your roadside brushing, like, uh, because I was just noticing the mower go here the last few weeks there and I'm thinking, like, do they bring the request to you, advise you that, hey, we're running, uh, the brush game wide and are you guys picking up brush clearings that way or?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Slipchak, so it's twofold, um, the ongoing internal stuff, it's, it's on a need, on a case-by-case basis. What we've been trying to focus on is doing a certain third of the MD per year, two years ago it was in the Alexandria area, last year it was Bonneville, this year it's, it's on the western side. Um, we're also, uh, working on completing the, I believe it's a ten-year plan or a twenty-year overall plan, but this is kind of a, uh, a fluid, a dynamic situation depending on what kind of weather we get, sometimes after a good windstorm, we're, you know, Goodrich they might get hit harder than, than Coal Lake, so we're going out there, so it's kind of a moving target, but yeah, we go on, on a case-by-case basis. We also have our operators do reports on the road and that is a part of it, is reporting if, if that road needs brushing or not.
Another question, guys, okay, so the existing road, uh, brushing you've done already in the past, have you seen a big difference in road maintenance now, once cleared the trees and all that?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Slipchak, I don't know if we'd see a big difference as improvement, there's less complaints from our operators, definitely, I think it takes a little bit of time to, to realize the benefits of it, but yes.
Okay, and then one other question I got is, and, uh, concerns received, thirteen flooding in the second quarter, April to June, like, we had a pretty dry year, so what were these, what are these thirteen, uh, complaints related to and is there something that, if they're an issue right now and it was, didn't have a lot much moisture, is there, do you saw some things that have to be looked at immediately or?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Slipchak, um, I believe the majority of these flooding concerns were frozen culverts, I agree, we had a mild winter, but when it did start thawing, um, sometimes the culverts may, maybe aren't maintained up to par or at, at the inception of it, it's, it doesn't have the, the proper slope, so they do, they do still freeze.
Now, I just, I was concerned if that's what the main issue was, okay.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fadev.
Hi, thanks, so on the Tonsure Road six fourteen, was that, was that a shoulder pull that you guys did there or just kind of cleaning up the ditches?
Uh, that was a shoulder pull.
That was a shoulder pull?
Yeah.
Good thing, because that's what I said.
Yes. Good thing you said that.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Krevjak and then Counselor Swagert?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, yeah, I just want to thank you, Amanti, for taking care of that couple, uh, to get out on the shoulder pull on, uh, four ninety-five and Tonsure six thirty, they're very thankful, so thank you for, for doing that over the weekend.
Thank you.
Counselor Swagert?
Yeah, I'd recently got a, a, or a, a question from a landowner on six thirty again, just asking when the MD plans on, I guess, oiling that or finishing that road south of or west of eight ninety-two?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Swagert, we looked at last, um, week, we met with a, a potential borrow source on site, so we're just coming up with a, with a plan of, of attack for, to complete it, we still intend to complete this work this year.
Okay, well, I just, I keep telling them that, I just was thinking we're getting closer to the end of the year, but, thank you.
Just a concern, I guess, I was traveling, doing custom silaging and then when you get to these mega pads and there's just a crazy amount of traffic coming out, there still seems like there's holes that comes right out on a major road, they'll just pound the roll because every truck is turning, everyone's a triple axle, uh, these things are obviously going to be fixed before the winters end, uh, before winter comes, I take it. Uh, there's just multiple ones that I've seen all over that everywhere they come out, they just burn a hole right in the asphalt or right in the gravel road.
To the, to the Reeve, I'm assuming you mean, yeah, on the far side from the approach because they're swinging, so what?
Yeah.
Yes, so we're noticing a lot of that, um, it's especially prevalent on cold mix roads. With the industry, we are identifying it and repairing it and sending them the bill as per our road use agreement.
So we're doing the work and we're sending them the bill, kind of thing?
Yes, gravel roads, we do not always do the work, but if it's cold mixed, they don't have the means to do the cold mix, so we just track the, track the cost and bill it back to them as per the agreement they signed.
Yeah, because it's, if it freezes up and we don't get them done, it's kind of a hazard, you know, a Yeah, because if it freezes up and we don't get them done, it's kind of a hazard. You know, some of them are quite deep, so, thank you. Any other questions, or just, you're finished your report, so we just need a motion now, I take it. All right, thank you. Counselor Fadiev, you're going to make this one?
What's that?
Mr. Dlinko. All right. Thank you, Counselor Fadiev, for making this motion, that council accepts the infrastructure services 2024 second quarterly report as information. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Kerry, thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
9.5.1.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
I have bylaw number 1875, which is the Joint Assessment Review Board's bylaw. So back in February 2024, council approved a request to establish a joint assessment review board in partnership with the Summer Village of Pelican Arrows, and then we've also reached out to neighboring municipalities who may want to participate as well. So each municipality will be presenting this, a bylaw similar in nature to this one, to their respective councils, for passing if they would like to participate. Council did give this bylaw first reading on August 27th. Administration's recommended action. Today, we are looking for a second and third reading of the bylaw.
Thank you.
I'll move second reading.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion, that bylaw, number 1875, being a bylaw of Municipal District of Bonneville, number 87, to establish joint assessment review boards with the partner municipalities to be given second reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor Swagert?
So, it was the Summer Villages wanted to do this, or all the other, like Town of Bonneville, City of Coal Lake? Who else is on board? Glendon, I guess?
So obviously, the Summer Village of Pelican Arrows is there, because they're the one that made the initial request. They do intend on participating. I haven't received, I've received verbal confirmation from many other neighboring municipalities who intend to participate. The Town of Bonneville has confirmed that they've given their bylaw first reading. They intended on bringing it for second and third today as well, at their meeting tonight. The other Summer Village, the Village of Glendon, also expressed interest and have verbally indicated that they intend on presenting bylaws to their respective councils for passing. It just hasn't occurred yet.
Okay, so they'll all have the option later, even if they choose, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry. Looking for third. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making this motion, that bylaw, number 1875, be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry, thank you. Thank you, Steph. On to 9.5.2.
So this is bylaw number 1876. It is the same initiative, except for the establishment of an intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board. Again, we, council approved this in February 2024 in partnership with the Summer Village of Pelican Arrows, and then we've also reached out to our neighboring municipalities who may want to participate as well. Council gave first reading to this bylaw on August 27th, and today, administration is seeking second and third reading as well.
Thank you. Looking for second reading. Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion, that bylaw, number 1876, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number 87, to establish intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board with partnering municipalities to be given second reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry, looking for third.
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Slipchik, for making this motion, that bylaw, number 1876, be given third reading. Any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's also Kerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. On to number 10.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Communication correspondence for council's consideration. Right off the bat, there's a letter from the Lakeland Society for Truth and Reconciliation of donation request for the 2024 National Day of Truth and Reconciliation commemorative activities. You can see the letter in your package. An email from the Bonneville and District Family Community Support Services for their welcome barbecue invitation. A letter from TC Energy indicating their takeover of the Lemming Lake Sails lateral loop. An email from the Lakeland Industry and Community Association Repair and Health Campaign signup, and I put on council's desk, it just came in here the other day, is a letter of support request from the Town of Bonneville for application of the Green and Inclusive Fund, a federal fund for the Aquatics Centre. The Green and Inclusive Fund is up to $25 million for new builds, and it is quite extensive. I don't have all the details in terms of the requirements, but it is fairly climate change specific in terms of the building, the way the building must be built. And I'd have to look it up and find all the details, but it's built to the, currently built to the highest net zero standard in Canada. And it's up to 25 million, so if the, if the pool was going to run in that 50 million range, I think we were probably getting close to that. I don't have an exact number. I think the last number I heard was 45 or 46 million. There would still be 20 million required from the municipality, or municipalities, a better said.
Thank you. Any questions on?
You know, what Mr. Hogan mentioned about this green fund thing? But yeah, costs, I thought we were told before, when they go green with these buildings, costs increases enormously. So I think that would really throw the budget up to probably 100 million on this building.
Through the reef, to council, I, because it hasn't been an MD project, it was the Town of Bonneville's project, I couldn't say how the engineering and what the plan was for the previous building, or for the previous plan that had gone up to about the mid-40s in terms of its price. Yes, if this was to be built to the standard here, I would suggest that it's highly likely that it would be more than what the current estimate is, but I couldn't say that for sure. I don't have the information from the town to say what, or even from the fund itself, to adequately define what the difference between the original build to what would have to happen for it to be approved through the Green and Inclusive Fund. The other, obviously, is under current legislation, fairly new legislation, is any funding from the federal government must be approved by the provincial government. This is, because this is a federal grant, not a provincial grant. Now, it is entirely possible, and I don't, because this is relatively new to me, maybe the province is managing a portion of that in Alberta, but I'm not, I'm not sure. The request from the town is for a letter of support, and I'll leave it to council to determine whether it's a letter of support with a financial backing, or a letter of support in principle with no commitment to funding.
Yes, Deputy Crick.
Yeah, I just wondered if we can get some more information on that, on what exactly the Green and Inclusive Community Building Program requires. Just, I'm curious, what kind of requirements are, I'm sure they have a list of requirements that they require in that building. I was also thinking that we, might not be a bad idea to reach out to the neighboring municipalities, and we're all work, if we could all work together and build one pool, as opposed to one in Coal Lake, one in Bonneville, trying to support two aquatic centers, very expensive. But if we could do one in the middle, and I see in here that there, it says the current swimming pool is utilized by many, including our residents and those from outlying municipalities, First Nations and Mati settlements. So it appears that people are already driving to the, to pool, so possibly we could even look at getting one aquatic center and everybody in the area working together on it.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, Mr. Kravjak.
Yeah, Reeve Kulinski. So, Mr. Hogan, once the pool was ready to go ahead, would it have to be part of the C2 agreement as well, or what?
That is an entirely good question to the Reeve and to the rest of council. The way it had been envisioned previously was that the new pool would be part of the C2 center. Those on the C2 board could probably, here at council, could probably speak with more clarity regarding the C2 center and its relationship to the pool. I don't know at this point if the town is looking to take the pool and put it as a separate entity. That, I don't know. I also would point out, and it's in the letter, that they wanted a letter of support by the 16th of September, which is basically Monday next week. I can certainly provide council with the links to the federal government website, and I would have to do some serious digging to find out what the, what these levels of of build in terms of the net zero content would be. It wouldn't take me very long, probably could get that out to council in the next day or two, but it is significant, as I'm reading the website right now, it would be quite significant.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, thanks. When all those pool questions were, excuse me, were happening, I looked into it pretty extensively. There was a municipality in the west that wasn't going to go down this way, and they decided to leave the 25,000 on the table, because the requirements were so heavy, even down to the actual liner of what were, what kind of liner that's on the pool. It can't just be uncovered, so every time you, you know, like you're not using the pool, you have to use a special cover for it. Your air recovery systems were huge, just because, you know, they don't want any condensate, or sorry, sorry, evaporation happening, because that's going to impact the environment, right? So the impacts were pretty heavy enough for a municipality to walk away from it, so, just to let you know.
And, Mr. Reeve, right from the federal government website, "New construction projects will be required to meet the following minimum standards. Built to be net zero carbon, a net zero carbon building means a highly energy-efficient building that produces onsite or procures carbon-free renewable energy, or high-quality carbon offsets in an amount sufficient to offset the annual carbon emissions associated with building materials and operational, or the need for a transition plan. There must be an attestation letter from a qualified registered professional engineer/architect that verifies the project is designed to meet the Zero Carbon Building Design Standard V4, without the need for a net zero carbon transition plan required. The attestation letter is intended to provide the required level of assurance that the project will be able to obtain ZCB/Design V4 certification."
They need another 25 million on top of the 25 they're giving, for anyone to even bite at this.
There's no mention in there that the builders have to come from Ottawa too, or what?
You know, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Carbon is the lifeline of this planet, and they're trying to sequester carbon. That doesn't make sense.
Well, we heard all the points. I don't think, I'm willing to support that with the federal government tie in it.
All right. Yeah, it's just unfortunate, Mr. Reeve, because we were willing to support a pool, and I'm not, I don't have any of the details about the GICB program, so, I mean, it's, you know, they've looked into it, we haven't. We spent like five minutes Googling something. I'm not sure if, you know, do we have the right just to say, oh no, they're not doing it properly, we wouldn't support a letter? I mean, like the CIO said, we can support a letter, we don't have to tie a number to it. If they choose, I'd rather write, I'd rather show support for it, and if, you know, they realize that it's going to cost way more to do this, then they won't do it. But I hate to say we're not interested in a pool anymore, because I guarantee we are. All right, anyone else?
Well, I just, any kind of letter of support, if this thing goes through, well, you know, you know what's going to happen. So we're all interested in, we're all, we're interested in the pool at one time, until you start hearing numbers, and then it's a lot harder to be, you know, it's a hard subject. And we're, and like Counselor Crick said, like, if there's one in the whole region, that's one thing, but if there's two, it's a lot to, you know, we have both Bonneville and Coal Lake in our, in our area.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I listened to Counselor Deputy Reeve Crick also, and, you know, of course, that was my thoughts in the past too, right? Build one pool. It's never going to happen. Like, I've tried it with the Town of Bonneville and City of Coal Lake, and it's,
No, no.
it'll never happen. Everyone wants their own pool, so.
Yeah, and you can understand their point of view.
For sure. But writing a letter of support doesn't tie us to anything, and it doesn't tie them to anything. They're not committed, they're just, they're looking into, I would, I would think, different ways of getting funding.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Slipchik.
I think, given the letter of support, just shows like, going to say, we're okay, we're working with the federal on their, all their requirements, just don't do it, like, we're not interested in listening to the federal government with all these stipulations to get some money.
Yes, Counselor Kravjak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'm okay with a letter of support, as long as there's no commitment for money. Like Counselor Swagert said, if the price is way too high, they may not go ahead with it anyway, so. See if we can get some funding. I'm in support of that.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to give them a letter of support. Well, they're not asking for that, but yeah, you could say that. No financial commitment.
All right, we'll wait for that to come up. All right, thank you, Counselor Swagert, for making a motion that the council approves the request by the Town of Bonneville for a letter of support regarding the grant application to the Green and Inclusive Community Building GICB program for the construction of a new Bonneville Aquatic Center, supporting the project in principle. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, we're just talking about principle with a financial as well, right? And I think that's...
If council wishes, we can. Traditionally, when you indicate in a letter you support a project in principle, that's the implication that you support the concept, you don't support any funds towards it. We have also, we have also added on top of that in the past, on a few occasions, just clarifying that we have no intention of providing financial contributions, but traditionally saying in principle does provide that implication that...
That's not very clear, though. I think that's my, I mean, I'm in support of a pool. You know, I am in support of expanding the pool that they have already, but I mean, for a municipality to walk away from a $25 million grant is a, is a big deal. So they looked into all that, and they went in hard, and I guess the ask of the green is just, is just so much. And I think we can definitely do something with a pool, but not, not at this extent and this level.
So it's at council's discretion, if you want to, if you want to amend the motion, we can add wording at the end to indicate specifying without financial commitment.
I don't think there's a need for amendment, because it was, it was...
Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah.
I think we should make something in camera here and discuss this further in camera. I'd like a motion in camera, so we can go and talk about this.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, the problem, I mean, I'm fine with supporting the project in principle, because for me, it meant there's no financial commitment.
Okay.
But...
I'll make a motion to go in camera.
All right, we got a motion to go in camera. All right, we got a motion to go in camera. All those in favor? I'll call.
Close session doesn't take precedence, so council either needs to all agree to withdraw the current motion and then make the motion to go into closed session or vote on the motion and then make the motion to go into closed session.
True enough. Would you like to? It's up to you, Counselor.
So you need to, because you got a motion on the floor, you need to, we'll, I guess I'll have to agree to pull the motion somehow until we're.
Uh, at this point, it's council's motion, so council as a whole needs to agree what to do with it, but you can either withdraw it or vote on it.
Well, you want to go into camera, so let's, let's, I'll make, do I need a motion then to withdraw it?
Nope.
We just all have to.
Just a hand?
Basically, you just need no opposition.
Okay, is there any opposition for?
Oh, I see.
I'm seeing none, so. We're withdrawing the motion. All right, your motion.
No, I'll make a motion to go in camera.
All right, Deputy Crick makes a motion that the meeting goes in closed session at eleven oh nine. I'll call for the vote.